Okay, this is April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, the year of staff community unit school security and board of education. Please rise to the public's leaders, please. The back row, unless, or the front row, others will be right next to us. The public leaders to the flag, at nine in the morning, and to the republic before which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Here.
Dr. Ferris?
President.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Headley?
Here.
Mr. Homow?
Here.
Mr. Maselli?
Here.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Here.
Okay, our first item tonight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is, um, you've got to take a look at any materials. There is an addendum on table for, uh, point. Uh, please take a look at the consent agenda. Any member of our community, any of, any ideas for the consent agenda, please let me know. Remember, if any of you are interested, suggest watching the first thing in your materials should make sure to include the agenda, the consent, the, uh, addendum as part of the motion. Move to opening, uh, approval consent agenda is printed in the board agenda, including April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, thirteen personal matters agenda.
Second.
I'll just go ahead and Mr. Peruzzi, second, and by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Homow?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next item in our bid, one of the bid is our recognition. Right, and we're recognizing, our act of finally recognizing staff recognition, we're from two building, Woodstock North and Cleveland, correct the board to group, uh, the recognition of our staff at both those buildings this evening. There's just, just most of our materials.
Move ten, here's the formal resolution. Whereas the board of education of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred wishes to recognize the contributions of these individuals and whereas District Two Hundred has benefited as a result of these accomplishments, now therefore be it resolved that the board of education of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred hereby bestows special recognition and certificate of achievement now in behalf of the citizens of the district.
We have a motion by Dr. Bidwell, we have a second, a second. Take your order, Mr. Headley, roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Homow?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lewis, uh, and, um, Audrey, Isabel, and Jessica, um, too.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, I want to take this opportunity just to acknowledge, um, some amazing staff, uh, and I thank the board, Dr. Moon, for allowing us this opportunity to share, uh, you know, the story of some of the great people we have working at, uh, Woodstock North. Um, the first person that I wanted to share a little bit about is Ms. Melissa Horus. Uh, I have a statement that is written out, and I have such statements here that my students would like to, uh, read about Ms. Horus. Uh, Ms. Horus is one of those dedicated, kind, and thoughtful people I had the pleasure to know during my time at Woodstock North. When that word is on your mind, Ms. Horus will listen to whatever you have to say. She is dedicated to the happiness of those around her, and it is clear through her demeanor that she values all of the students here at Woodstock North. With that, I'd like to ask, uh, Jessica, Audrey, and this event, come up and say a few words about Ms. Horus.
Uh, Jessica Ferris, and I asked her about the sistership of my older day at school there and family for our culture and status, and it has been a journey, and I'm very interested in the number of conversations that we had, um, talking about when we found the annoying to the boys, and so what would just be best for me in general, so I've been thinking about maybe your best about my future career. Uh, Ms. Horus is very supportive of what everyone does, and she has put up with the decision to add value to my future, and have made decisions that Mr. Wesley has made in the school and in the rest that he helps believe in.
Mommy, this is a very good sale, and I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to speak to him, and I'd like to thank Ms. Horus for giving me a reason to go to school today. Ms. Horus is a great customer, especially when it comes to her trauma, and she's great when it comes to both problems. I'd like to thank Ms. Horus for giving me the opportunity to myself and my leader to help out in the weather, though I was telling you to look at the bright side of things, what I am having at that day, and most importantly, treating us like her own. She is over all set to positive go ahead of the school with her big smile she always has on her face. I want you to know that I'm very appreciative at Woodstock North and I'm very deserving for being recognized tonight. Thank you again, and have a great night.
I've started working a lot every other summer, so I'm not my second semester correctional year, and she's helped me get through high school the entire time. I've seen nothing but other new connection every day from her, even when she doesn't feel like it. I'm so glad that I know her so well. She's the first person I got to be gender and thoughtful advisor, if I just need someone to talk to. I've helped her educate my first work experience as well, and I genuinely couldn't thank you, thank her enough for everything she's done for me.
Yeah, you don't have to say it, you're good. Uh, Ms. Horus, for the moment now, thank you for everything that you do, uh, for our kids. Uh, it is truly hard to work with you. Um, round of applause.
Put it on to the chair, Mr. Penrell, starting with it.
Mr. Penrell, you come on up. Uh, again, just another fabulous fact number we have at Woodstock North, Mr. Jason Penrell. I'll share a brief, uh, uh, essay on some thoughts that a student shared about Mr. Penrell. Uh, Mr. Jason, Jason Penrell is an extraordinary educator, uh, whose compassion, creativity, and dedication have profoundly been back to the students of Woodstock North. As a dual credit chemistry teacher, he has transformed an intimidating and collegeable course into an inspiring, uh, collegeable, I'm sorry, inspiring and accessible experience through his welcoming classroom environment, uplifting mindset, and innovating teaching methods. With that, we move to have our speakers return.
Um, Mr. Penrell, also known as Mr. P, is the science teacher. This we heard through the things that I've heard and how I see him. Seeing him at nine thirty every morning, five times a week, I never get used to it. Not in the sense that I hate his class, but that he's ready to teach that early. He just needs to play his rock music and start popping dad jokes, and he's the best teacher he can be. And also, he's one of the Mr. Penrell as the teacher that makes, that makes students feel safer. Never mind my talks with Mr. Penrell, I have already backed music and just completely possible. Along with other students, for each time he emphasizes with us and now reads our readings. Mr. P, I don't know if you guys know Mr. Penrell. Um, he's someone who I've never had personally as a teacher, but I've always seen him on holidays, and he always says a pound of bread to me and a smile on his face. I didn't have Mr. P for some basic to prep, and he was the most helpful, taking time to make sure we were just moving needed. His dedication is well seen in the outside of the classroom. And again, we want to both to know that you're very appreciative at Woodstock North and are very deserving for your awards tonight.
I also have Mr. Penrell as my DC chemistry teacher. He works and still is one of the best teachers I've had. He takes us teaching beyond the curriculum and gets to those individual students that he needs. He'll still catch me coming to his class to chat about upcoming concerts or other kinds of things. And I've heard seen or unseen or unheard in his class, whether in class related or personal. He will notice if I look down and check up on the active class, or if he notices I'm struggling with a lesson, he makes sure it's a place I help me to understand it. I think I give him a lot of effort for this and the various classes and even after. Overall, I applaud you for choosing these phenomenal staff members for guys and I can grant you that, and it's very well worth it, and it's.
Just one last thing I'd like to share with all of you. Uh, the day that I landed on Mr. Penrell, who was the teacher that I wanted to bring here to celebrate, he was working in study hall, and, uh, I had a conversation, like, who am I going to do, who are we doing? And a student who was probably about, I don't know, fifteen, twenty feet away from us, she looked at my head, sat, and she looked at me, and she gave me a thumbs up, and she's like, "He is awesome, he deserves it." Um, you know, listening to both, you know, the, the girls talking about, you know, Mr. Penrell and Ms. Horus, they really speaks to about the connections that our staff makes, uh, that their students, I think it's so critical to the success that we have, and this really speaks to what extraordinary educators they are. Mr. Penrell, thank you so much for being part of Woodstock North, we are very lucky
Ms. Horus?
Okay.
All right, so we're agreeing with staff.
Good evening, board of education. Um, thank you for this opportunity to recognize two very important staff members to the Greenwood community. Our first, um, staff member that I'd like to recognize this evening is Tom Creaker. Um, I've had the opportunity to work with Tom over the last six years, uh, over at Greenwood, he's a fourth grade teacher. Um, he has just such an impact on our students, uh, similar to what Josh was saying, that building relationships with students and making sure that they have a safe place to learn is one of the foremost things that Mr. Creaker takes care of every morning, um, making sure that his kids are heard, they are in a safe place, and that they're ready to learn. He continues to work tirelessly to implement new instructional strategies, even though he is retiring at the end of this year. Um, even on April twenty-second, we're still walking in and seeing amazing things happening in his classrooms. So I would like to just take a minute to say thank you for everything that you do, um, but more importantly, I have two students here, Kim Lee and Jana from our student leadership team, who would like to say something to the students of help with Mr. Creaker.
Hi, I'm Jana, and tonight I want to express my sincere gratitude to Mr. Creaker. Your passion for your students and teaching has truly inspired me to learn and grow. Your kind, gentle, and compassionate support makes the lesson in that family school year. Thank you for being more than just a teacher, but the most positive, funny, and smart person who has made the biggest difference on my academic journey. I'm truly going to miss you this year. I'm honored to Mr. Creaker because he is very helpful and encouraging to all of his students. He makes learning fun, makes us laugh. He's very kind and cares about his student, he cares about his students' success. Mr. Creaker is a great teacher and he'll do this when he retires.
All right, thank you so much, girls. Um, our next staff member is Rose Stiger. She is, um, just such an integral part of our Greenwood community. Not only is she one of our bus drivers, but she is also one of our lunch supervisors. Um, again, talking about those relationships, she is one of those staff members that everybody just adores, uh, from the students to our families. Um, when she walks onto our property, it's like, what can I do, where do they need me? What, you know, who needs what? And she's always ready to just help in any way possible, whether it's with student concerns or issues on the playground, like, somebody needs a ride home on the bus, she's like, "I got it," we check and look at the bus one, but it's like, we got it, and we're gonna make sure that these kids are taken care of. Um, so tireless, little relationships, and like I said, she is, bowels that not a walk that takes a village. So Kim Lee and Jana have some things to say about this, please.
Ms. Rose. Ms. Rose, thank you for being noticeably kind and patient in the cafeteria and on the bus. Your guardian angel and rewards any kindness and positive attitude has made such a big impact, a model of our ethic day after everyone. Thank you for getting him home safely and the rest of us. Mr. Creaker and Ms. Rose, District Two Hundred is very lucky to have you both. Thank you.
I'm honored to Ms. Rose because she is great at what she does, she is nice and helpful, she encourages students to have fun. I look forward to seeing her every day.
We're gonna move to continue with our, with the part of our meeting. Uh, we just had a woman, at this point, who came primarily from the recognition to have a chance to, uh, to close it down, if you don't want to figure the rest of it. Uh, if you want to stay, it's open meeting, or we're glad that you're here, and we'll see you, uh, if you want to say no, it's time to come down. Thanks for coming. Okay, we'll start in just a minute. Thanks, very much. Okay, next item in our agenda is communications. Communication for our community members and district employees to express point of view and attitude to the issue. It's a signed sheet of public that has your name, address, phone number, name of organization represented, depending on a brief description of topic to be addressed. Comments are generally limited to three minutes and according to Board Policy two colon two thirty, and otherwise covered by Board Policy two colon two thirty. We're gonna start with comments to the public. We do have, uh, someone signed up, Gordon, is it Burke?
Gordon Ben.
Ben, Gordon.
All right, so I'm Gordon Ben, and I'm a senior here at Woodstock High School. And, um, about a week, a week and a half ago, there was a shortage at lunch, of, um, lunch staff, and so I believe some of them went off to, like, other schools within the district. And because of that, there was only one lunchtime that was open, and we only had, like, thirty minute, like, if even lunches at, at the school. So there were many people that had, like, only three minutes to eat their lunch after getting it, because there was only one line in function. So that's, I'm just putting it on the radar, and, uh, yeah, that's about it.
Appreciate that.
Of course.
Okay, thank you for coming. Thanks for your, your point of view. All right. Yeah, we'll have to find out kind of why that happened and see if something we need probably want to avoid in the future, but thank you for bringing your attention. Okay, uh, that's all for anybody who's signed up. Does anybody else, have any other members of the public who wish to address the board at this time? Okay, are there any staff comments? Board of comments?
I've got one. I, um, I was at the highness meeting today, and I said, uh, the group that I had gone ahead, that privilege is only to the, uh, musical on there last night, that I said, it was, I was just blown away, and, uh, Dr. Moon said that they haven't been that good for, or better, or equal in the past, and so I was just, I haven't, I'll have to admit, I haven't been in a long time, and I, I probably won't miss another. Those kids were phenomenal, the talent, if, we were blowing musicians, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for making it known, you're, you're decent. Any other board comments? Okay, we'll move into super comments.
All right, how are you making time to hear from us at all of our schools? Uh, with our last of our music festivals is coming up this Monday, Woodstock North, our Georgia Opera Festival, all going to be ready then. Then this week we start our end of year convention for our junior eighth seniors. Uh, our team of dentists for WHS will be this week, uh, and our next week. A month after school, it's still a great time to celebrate our seniors and move on, I think in their exceptional lives, also an exciting time for all of us. And also, uh, including your seat today, we're gonna talk about when we approved the parking lot at Greenwood Creekside, since the board had about, uh, you know, drop off, pickup, and so we had a traffic study done, so you have your seat, you can look over. Nobody can come on today, so you can have the information. Uh, we'll bring back a, uh, proposal at some point, just so you can have time to, to, uh, have feedback on the proposal in place. One interesting point, that we made two, you will read about, two general recommendations. One, and Paul has got, we're trying to learn on quality, what the, our class makes sure we're all ready, but they, they need some sort of flipping, you know, the buses and the cars from one side to the other, and, you know, part of that is, if you think about it, we could go the whole length and then come around that circle for drop off, it probably will double the amount of space, uh, for cars to get in there, uh, but to learn, the good thing over the board, because I discussed this today, and I'm sure it's the right way, probably I think it doesn't seem to be a disadvantage to it. The one problem would be if properly you throw it back up that direction, it might get out there, but, give or take, there's one, you will see that, and we'll go back to the proposal at some point, so you can have, uh, a chance to give us feedback on that.
Thank you for that.
That's our report.
Okay, uh, next item in our agenda is our monitor report, which is called, for preference.
So this is a, a committee we met numerous times this year. I think, you know, a member of the board came in the last, or someone else to the board, and I think they're telling, uh, I believe our offerings in this area are outstanding. You know, we'll share later, but over sixty-six percent of our seniors that are graduating this year, graduated twelve, so that's probably more college credit, uh, so I think we did a lot of big stuff. I think what we're amazing at is getting all of our spots so parents can really know how to access and how to get all that information. So we spent a lot of time this year creating, it's not ready to go yet, it will be in August, a website that really serves as a repository for all the information we have on college and careers. So we spent, you know, Kate Harmon just left, she, she runs the world center, chief of our committee, MCC, RR, staff, just meeting and talking about what could we make sure we make this information available, so she's gonna walk us through, they had, um, a lot of clerk in here in town, who created the webpage for us, to be, his parent, uh, kids that he gives up, very good family, but, so anyway, where you're gonna come to is a page is gonna have, we're, we're limited to two here. The first one, they're in College Prep High School, we're very good at wanting to lose to know what it is and how you do it, dual credit and all of the big options. Then I have confirmation of planning for college, this could go on a lot of too, so those are two things you can Google everything at. Both here, you can click on the, all the information we have, we'll show you, the information in both of those topics. And then you go down to the one, okay, so once you, once the information, you start choosing a path, and here's some areas to have, we're looking at, we have four-year college, community college, trade school, postman, military, and then you, when you click on any of these, it brings up pages with even more information, but it's not really, you know, people are this, it's just a start, like, okay, whether you're, you know, seventh grade, you wanna know, you know, how much kids can get to the college level, whether you're a senior looking for that, this is now a good spot for Woodstock town, right? Click and then get all the information, and it's a key to be walking through, uh, just choosing one. It's a four-year college, right? It goes four-year college, and then on that page, we have all different pieces of information we have, uh, and then, yeah, two for a government placement, uh, college board, you can come in at, all different, they have, you know, for people to look and see, all different pieces of information available to them, we have all, and so after searching, kind of, you know, type them on a website, it's in one spot where you can kind of go and see where all of this, I hope, you know, uh, state scholars, scores, uh...
Open versus AP credit, I think that's an important one.
That's a great one. People are setting different, setting different, right? This is, and now kids really have all that information, but now parents or kids, it's in one spot, it'll help do it. If you go back up, kids, beginning, there's some highlights on the right there, um, you know, just choose our path, and it will feature some links there too, compared, but, so there's one spot for all the information, and then it follows for all, if you go back to the, um, any other, you need to know that town too, it goes, six of, we're bringing College Prep High School, dual credit, dual degree, you know, all the different things we have offer, and then particularly build that, we get more information on each of
I think the other thing we talked about, the future links, is also just highlighting some of our own students in our portal online, and some of the different paths that they've taken too, and bringing that back towards the state, to see where our old friends have done, um, as they've, uh, there's...
If you look back to paying for college too, and, you know, that, and that's some more than I'll share, modern day, is, you know, getting facts, or getting financial information, you know, how, it's really financially all about having literacy, it comes financially easy, knowing student loans and how that looks like, so really, you know, we just thought that, had, when people learn all about, choose a path, college, we've got career up there too, it's like, oh, we've got military, so all the different paths our kids are gonna take, you know, it's information, to just, it's a touch of your finger, get more information available to you. I think it's much easier to navigate than anything we have now. Um, and again, we're worried about our options to have, we think it's a better job to have to do them together, uh, in one spot, kind of took some pictures of guys like the military one was, and one town, so it's to, um, you know, just kind of localize it, feature our kids and our students. you know, just kind of localize it and feature our kids and our stories.
And our piece that we'll have on the physical page is like the calendar. So we kind of have some of those upcoming events that we're gonna have, and I will leave it to pass for some of our colleges there. So that'll be in this page just now, right there.
What we have prepared, you know, we'll get out there, everyone, you know, probably know that, you could definitely know what high schools, just know, here's a place to go, learn more information, whatever that is.
So this will be on the, available through the website, you have the parents and students part?
Yep.
And then we have that forum for college planning or, that's kind of what we get integrated into this, or what will be?
But you can get that from here, but this is, this is the outside of the forum.
Yeah, it's another tool.
Another tool, yeah. It'll be linked in here, but this is not, you know, because our kid gets more information, and we've talked about it. This is really for parents, anyone that wants to dig down a little bit, or anything, right? Just kids know what we do, what we offer.
Questions, comments?
The first thing, like you just said, I was gonna say, we've done a marble shop for years with kids. We focus on giving them all this information, but we also, parents on the sidewalk. This allows them to kind of walk through that process with their kids and so on and so on. It's a great tool.
Any other comments or questions? What are your thoughts on the?
Always first circle for sure, yeah. Cool, that all back to school, we can message it. We still want like a more of like a symbol, we're working on that, so we can plan it a little bit better, just to everybody. But we want outside this, we're here for sure. Alright, thanks for doing.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work.
Definitely, I think, doesn't that be glad that you're here for carnal, I want to.
Thank you both, everybody. Okay, great. Okay, uh, moving on to our next item. Our center of business, this is very casual, this is a, this is approval of revised community unit school district order, middle of high school activities code of conduct.
Yes, we tried to take the improved act of the board last time, and so we're requesting add. Um, if you go through there, we've highlighted the additions, uh, to that last provision.
Any other comments or questions?
This is really not a lot of date, it was pretty changing, you know, we'll be right back again in the headquarter, I'm ready for the year, so are you tired of something else you wanna see?
I appreciate you getting it done and doing what we're doing, those things. James, I saw it was terrific, I thought it was a nice addition to it. And I mean, good stuff. Sometimes I start writing it, and I'm like, here it is, too late? But most of what I had a good, the last time was to go in there, so I think it was a good job. A lot of people know that these things are independent, you got other things that are, several codes of conduct, we're gonna have a lot of.
Any other questions or comments? Now, this is a just motion. Move to approve the revised Woodstock community unit school district 200 mill and high school activities code of conduct. Motion, Mr. Percy, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Home. Roll call, please.
Mr. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Home?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Pipow?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Now, before we move on, there's one more thing I want to ask. The next part was to make sure that people can see, and that they can get to it, so that.
Yep.
We, there's never the reason, I didn't realize that, and I thought it'd be, but I needed to take this and the IHSA and IEPSA, there's several one code of conduct, and put them on the webpage. For the time we give, if people can get to it, and they can't complain, yeah, no worries. For the time we give, that's on there for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. That's a part of our finished business. Moving on to the new business. The new, uh, first item of new business is third quarter review of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to direct your attention to section eight point one in your materials. And we'll take a look at where we are, we're seventy-five percent of the way through the year. And we'll just start off with our three main operating funds. Looking at the ad fund, fund number ten. If you look down, and I, again, I think I've said this many times, I really like this setup because it gives you a trend, you can see where you are year over year. So I'll point out some of the, some of the things that are important. Uh, one is when you look across the property taxes, you'll notice again that we're at forty-eight point five percent. All of the property taxes for the FY twenty-three or the twenty twenty-three levy have been collected. We collected ninety-nine point five percent, so it's one of those uncollectible. But nonetheless, you can see we're at forty-eight point five percent. We will start collecting property taxes for the twenty twenty-four levy in May and June. And we typically collect about fifty-three percent of the taxes before we get to the year end. So you'll start seeing that coming when we start looking at our financials in May. The second thing that I wanted to point out to you is you're looking down through the revenue as well. If you look at the categoricals, when you look across that line, you'll see that it looks like FY twenty-five is a little bit low. And the only reason for that is just because of the processing time on the, on the state's part. Before this meeting, I looked at it and they actually had set it up for payment on April sixteenth. So I would expect to see that in the next couple of days, at the latest. And we're expecting to get about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, will get us up to eighty-five percent, which is a little bit closer to where we should be at this point in time. Otherwise, looking down at the expenses, you'll see, almost close to the bottom, you'll see transfers, and you can see that thirteen million dollar item that is just a transfer to the debt service fund so we can make our large payment that we did in January. And you'll see that again when we bring the budget to you later this year, or the next debt service payment. So those are the big things on Fund Ten that I wanted to point out to you. Otherwise, for seventy-five percent of the year, we're looking pretty good, we're pretty much where we should be. Any questions on Fund Ten? Okay, let's move on to Fund Twenty. This is our operations and maintenance fund, so this is kind of the, the bones of the operation. Again, same story with the revenues, the property taxes were at forty-eight point three, but we'll see that pick up once we start collecting in May and June. The other thing is, we look down in the state general, in the general state aid. Typically, we set up a budget amount for some transfers among the other funds if we need it. So we may do that for this fund. You'll see a fifty thousand dollar grant, that was a matching grant that we received from funds. But otherwise, we're in pretty good shape there. Looking down at the expenditures, you can see, you know, we're actually in pretty good shape. You can see another transfer there for a million dollars, and that was to the capital spending fund. So that covers part of our solar, as well as part of the Creekside corridor parking lot. But otherwise, for seventy-five percent of the year, we're in pretty good shape. Any questions on Fund Twenty? Okay, and then finally, let's look at Fund Forty, our transportation fund. Okay, similar story with the property taxes, again. The other thing that caught my eye that I should bring your attention was the state categoricals. And again, similar story as we had in Fund Ten. The state was slow in processing that, and actually, we should see another nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And I saw that it was set up to be processed on May, on April fifteenth, so I expect to see that in the next couple of days. So what the state does is they essentially voucher it or set it up, and then they process it a couple of days later. So we'll see that coming in shortly. You know, the other thing that you'll see is when you look down in supplies and materials, it's, it's a little bit high, but, well, not really, but it relates to new software that's coming related to transportation. So you'll see some information on that probably in the coming meeting. Otherwise, in the capel outlay, the hundred and thirty-four thousand, that was pretty much the two vans that we purchased and had, I guess, decalled out so that they matched the school. So that was something that was brought to you earlier this year. But otherwise, things are moving the way they should. For seventy-five percent of the year, we're pretty much where we should be for the funds. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
The only comment I have is, when you get to the insurance fund, it continues to go up and up and up and up.
I would like to address that as well, for a second.
Please do, yeah, go ahead.
You can see that the insurance fund looks pretty high, actually, this time. Two reasons. One is our March Blue Cross Blue Shield was unusually low, it was about eight hundred thousand. Typically, it's about one point two million. And it also had a, we received a rebate for our, our self-insurance, our auto self-insurance for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So between the two of those things, it made this one look unusually high. But looking forward into April, you're gonna see Blue Cross Blue Shield goes to one point two. We'll get back on, online with the typical expenses. So it's kind of an anomaly this, for March thirty-first, and you'll see that coming down a little bit.
The nice thing about that, though, is that if we had a little bit more of a secret economic year next year, otherwise, we've got a little room there, so we can, you know, we can hit insurance in a week or two, and feel safe. You know, people do it well, and you worry if people go five, and then seven, you know, you get the next like that. So it's like that little balance there, too.
Any other question?
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, no, actually, we're part of this, so if there's any other questions or comments, we'll move on. Uh, next item of our new business is approval of the resolution to sell the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five building trade house.
It's a reminder, the house is great, and actually, here, till you get an indication, sort of a special open house just had set up in there. But like State Mom would be close to selling this house versus like public bid. So Justin and you, we work with our committee, we first called, made time to appreciate, and we others, and they recommended a price for us to set for bid. And we go with it, but except we're going, kind of, we really solidified the price that the board set to, uh, future meeting. Beautiful house, really excited about it. We're a private house we built today, which is really exciting, and, uh, it's a highlight, so hopefully, we'll get it, if not, then we'll, we'll put it on the market, do the goodies. But this is just a second bid price, correct, we did a price prior.
And you know, the bid price was set by, was just better than.
Yeah, as I said, we, we did, we did it so we, and we can keep with the kind of business that I'm a hero of. Yeah, we started, I mean, people who love this town seem tired of me, but I'm not a loser, so I don't think we can trust that, hopefully.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Alright, now, this is a just motion on, in our materials.
Move to approve the, in weight, the reading of the resolution for the sale of the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five building trade house.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hedley, second by Mr. Home. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Home?
Yes.
Mr. Percy?
Yeah.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Pipow?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Alright, that's all on our new business. Next item of our agenda then is our community reports, very nice, met everybody, many times, the reports are last thing. A reminder, our next meeting is on May sixth. And which one will set our dividend or current schedule for the rest of the year, and square in our returning numbers. Also, see you guys around. This is for first of our year end, so if there's somebody there, I'm sure, and we'll see you around. Alright, if there's anything else, uh, anything you want to adjourn, some move.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Ferris, second by Mr. Misselli, roll call, please.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Pipow?
Yes.
Mr. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Home?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.